Morning, everyone. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of New Canaan on March 21st, 2023 at 8:31 a.m. We have a quorum, so first item on our agenda is minutes of the meeting on March 7th. Any comments or corrections?
None here.
A move we approve.
Second.
On favor, hi.
Tim, can we just ask on the on the agenda, and maybe we're going to save it for select comments, but we thought we were going to talk about the Playhouse budget.
Oh, sure.
On doing comments, or do you want to add an agenda item?
We'll need that agenda item.
Okay.
So.
Good.
Members of the public are welcome to write comments to Board of Selectmen on booked agenda topic schedule review and revoke comments submitted electronically should be sent to the BOS distribution at newcanonct.gov, and they'll be read before the end of the meeting. And we have several members of the public here.
We do. We have people signed up, so we're going to start with the people in the room, and then there's some that have indicated they would like to speak online. So I think Carter Weiss.
Does work.
Yeah. This one.
All right.
Hello.
Okay. My name is Carter Weiss. I'm a New Canaan resident, so thanks for letting me speak. I'm here to talk about the tower plan C and D E F G, whatever we get to next. So if you just humor me for a few minutes, I'd really appreciate it. So if it's okay, I'd like to just pretend that the tower is needed, wanted, safe, not going to be a eyesore for miles. And we can pretend that it's not going to ruin any land that we'll never get back. So let's just hand wave all of that for a few minutes. Other issues.
Working. Let's just just make sure that you can be heard.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Did anybody here, do I need to repeat any of that, or did you get cut most of it?
I think you're good.
Okay, great. So as I was saying, let's just pretend that there's no other issues and jump into two issues that I have that I don't know if it's been raised, but I apologize if it has. So first, I'm very curious why we're using a 10-year-old RFP. And second, what level of diligence have we done currently on both Homeland and their character as a corporation and their financial where it would fall? More specifically, more specifically, you know, with a new RFP, which I believe is probably needed here because the other ones a decade old. We'd be able to pick the best partner, the best terms, the best technology. I'm not sure this is. The satellite is coming a long way. And I believe it's the fiduciary responsibility of each select person to be doing this. Additionally.
Where do you do that?
I think someone else is on this on the speaker. Look, in 10 years ago, it may have made sense. 10 years ago, it may have made sense to put the the town's funds into Signet Signature Bank or Silicon Valley Bank. It's not the case today. Obviously, they're both gone. I think the same rule applies here. Secondly, would Homeland even be considered today? You know, if you just do a little bit of research online, there's a lot of controversial projects that they have with other towns. For example, the town of Carmel, New York looks to me to have been led down the primrose into what is an illegal agreement. I don't know if you spent time with that, if you've looked at that, if you've looked at what that means for us, if we are going to go down a similar path. Because a New York State judge this summer ruled that Homeland and Verizon and the town agreement wasn't wasn't legal. I'm quoting other publications. You can have them here if you want to look at it. So simply put, this seems like a kind of aged, overworked painting in business, which I'm in. At this point, you would just scrap it, start again and do it properly, which I think needs to be looked at here. And I think it's responsibility of the select people to do this, even if one person is madly passionate about this project, it doesn't mean it's what's appropriate and what was set up 10 years ago needs to be revisited, even if it takes the time and energy, it's the right thing to do. And that's just simply called leadership, and we hope we can get it today. Thank you.
Next speaker is Barbara.
Thank you, Barbara. Oh. So one of the things that I want to discuss today is the need study that is on the agenda for spending $12,000 for a need study. And I believe that it's premature. I think we need to wait for the Utilities Commission and have a group of people that are educated in the industry, helping to decide what is best for New Canaan. Because, as my mother would say, it's really not good to throw good money after bad. The next thing I want to talk about is this picture. And I'm going to show everybody in here. These fun pink lines are options B and C overlaid on an aerial photograph. Now, this is a lot harder for you all to see, but this is a digitized map in the town's website that shows the water pipe. The easements that are owned, these dotted lines right here are easements that are owned by Aquarian. And there are water pipes in the ground there because I have walked it. I have taken photographs of the valve controls. This blue line shows a water pipe. And if option C were granted, the the road would not only cross the wetlands twice, but it would cross over the water pipe twice. The town regulations require that anything within 100 feet of a freshwater line be granted a special permit. So if you're talking about 185-foot-tall tower that is going to be within 100 feet of the freshwater line, the potential is there that it could sever all water, serving all of the homes and fire hydrants in the area beyond that location. So I just would like for you to consider that.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Karen Murray.
Good morning. My name is Karen Murray, and I'm a 30-year resident of New Canaan. The past 25 years, I've lived at 39 Carriage Lane, where my husband and I raised our family. In 2001, when I was 40 years old, I was diagnosed with stage-two HER2-positive breast cancer. Our daughter was in second grade at West School, and our son was in fifth grade at Saks. After multiple surgeries, countless chemotherapy treatments, treatments and radiation, I consider myself lucky. I have never spoken about this publicly, nor did I ever expect to, until I learned that both of the proposed 185-foot West School cell towers accessed from the end of Llewellyn Drive, options B and C would be built right outside one of my bedroom windows. To say this has caused anxiety for my family would be an understatement. When the previously proposed West School cell tower was under consideration, now known as Option A, the town council held a hearing on need. This was a very powerful hearing. The town council promised to hold a similar hearing on health. As of today, this hearing has never occurred. Before either of these new taller West School tower proposals move forward, the planning and zoning condition or any additional taxpayer money is approved. We, as constituents, deserve a hearing on the health risks these towers present. Thank you.
Chris Williams.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for your time today. My name is Chris Williams. I live at 140 Llewellyn Drive, which is at the end of the cul-de-sac with my wife, Megan, and my three daughters. We moved here in August 2020. We built a home at Llewellyn Drive. We love the location. We love the natural surroundings. My kids love seeing wildlife thrive in its surroundings in our backyard. Needless to say, I'm disappointed with all three tower proposals. Any of the West School sites, A, particularly B, and C as well. Prior to this meeting, it was conclusively determined that Site B was inadequate, both in absolute terms and also on a relative basis to Site A, which, for the record, I am also not in favor of. Ray Vergatti spoke at in June at a board of selection meeting and specifically said, quote, "The elevation is extremely low there, and obviously it's wet. As much as we would love to tuck a tower even further down the slope, it doesn't check the boxes for the carriers." Mr. Moynihan, you've also made comments at the P&amp;Z meeting in October, stating that we thought this tower is off limits. It raises other issues such as visibility by the neighbors. Ray Vergatti also said in November at a town council meeting that he did look at the spot off of Llewellyn Drive, and because of the elevation down there, the engineers would need to roughly 185-foot structure, and we are sensitive to that. When I do a site in any given area, I look for the least visual input, and 185-foot tower here is going to have a visual impact over Llewellyn Drive for the homes on Carriage Lane. For the avoidance of doubt, I am against all proposals for A, B, C, and anything in this area that comes thereafter. There are numerous compelling reasons not to build any of these sites, and I'm sure it will be articulated by my fellow citizens today. But here are a few of the ones that greatly affect my family directly. The tower height, 185 feet, is at least 100 feet above the tree canopy there, or whatever is going to be left of it. It's 70 feet, 75 feet above the town state height limit for a cellphone tower being 110 feet. And the tower is so outrageously tall that Homeland isn't even bothering proposing to address the aesthetic impact by adding artificial foliage like they have on other sites. It's just going to be a large pole that's above the tree line and visible from all sides. From an environmental standpoint, each site calls for approximately a 6,000-square-foot area to be cleared off, plus access roads that range from 2 to 600 feet long. So hundreds of surrounding trees will be cut down, and trees around that area that haven't been cut down will likely die off. And it's obvious that significant wildlife will be displaced. Each site crosses over wetlands. As indicated by Barbara, there are significant implications for our town's water. And there's also going to be significant disruption caused by the construction, construction, maintenance, and ongoing operations of a tower at any of these sites. The tower construction itself, the maintenance and the use of generators, fuel delivery, noise, lights that are on these towers, all disturbing our quality of life. And then, most significantly for me, there's the unknown health impact to our children. Parents were rightfully distraught about the prospects of building a tower 900 feet away at West School, where their kids spend six hours a day and will be there for approximately six years. The proposed Site B would be a few hundred feet from where my one-year-old's head sleeps at night, and all three of my kids spend about 18 hours a day for the next 17 years before they go off to college. For all the reasons above, I'm prepared to commit extraordinary personal time, financial resources, and personal capital to ensuring that these proposals don't proceed. The specific request today is to approve a rushed and, from my standpoint, substandard proposal to demonstrate the technical need for these towers, which we'll rely on for the basis for building more cellphone towers in the area. I would encourage you all first to speak with the residents and hear what we have to say about the resident demand for these towers as opposed to just the technical need. I've been encouraged by the support that you see in the room today and on Zoom. I suspect as this progresses, that's only going to grow stronger given the short notice period that people have had. So as I look around the room and I look at the people on Zoom, I think I could say for everyone that no one wants this. No one wants this in its current form. My family doesn't want this. And by the way, my cellphone service is just fine. I strongly encourage you to adhere to the requests of the citizens that put you into office and that you have are positioned to serve. And I thank you for your time and consideration.
Good morning, Selectmen. Joe Paulo from Arrowhead Trail. I feel we're developing a bit of a friendship for all the meetings we've attended together, so thank you for having me again. During the time I've attended this meeting, meetings of the town council, planning and zoning, one thing I haven't seen, and the videotapes will show this, is we don't see town residents showing up saying, "I really need better cell service. I really would like a big cell tower." None, virtually none, not here today, not on Zoom, not at the town council meetings, none. I think you really need to take that into consideration for your deliberation process. The second thing I'd like to say is the town council said last week Chairman Carl that the town council has spoken loud and clear, sending a message that Option A was a nonstarter, and the response has been to move the tower 400 feet with Option C. My own personal opinion is that's a little disrespectful to the town council, moving 400 feet. And then what? If they vote it down again, we'll move it another 400 feet, and then another 400 feet, and what, till we wind up in Rhode Island? So I really want to make the point today that the proposed study, and I'm a big advocate of having a new study to show what type of cell service we have, and as you know, I've spoken on this point, is not really a study. I think it's appropriately assessed on the agenda as an analysis. Mr. Moynihan quoted a number of $45,000 to $50,000 to redo something similar to the Centerline Study. Now we have a proposal for about $13,000. Are we getting a 70% discount, or are we getting 70% less study? When you look at the methodology that's been proposed in the VCOM proposal, which is now online, it's about three, three or four sentences of what they're going to do. When you look at the methodology that was in the Centerline Study, it's about three pages, very specific, different types of endpoints, different types of measurements they were going to do. So I would really encourage you not to approve this assessment today. We do need a study. That study should be vetted by a solid utility commission, looking at multiple vendors. I have no idea how this company, VCOM, has been researched. And to say that this is not really what the town needs in terms of complete data. And so I would encourage you today to not vote for the assessment or the analysis, but to actually vote for a study and one that's actually developed with a standard RFP that the public can see, vendors that the public can get a sense of, and then do the right thing and collect real data on the town. Thank you.
Don't see anybody else left in the room? Okay, so we now have Clark Murray. Unmute yourself.
This is Clark Murray. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, hang on. Let me begin my video. Members of the Board of Selectmen, my name is Clark Murray. Since July of 1998, for almost 25 years, my family and I, my wife Karen, you heard from a moment ago, have lived in our home at 39 Carriage Lane. And this morning, out of respect for your time, I want today to make just two very quick points. And if you're taking notes, the titles of the two points are, number one, coverage analysis deficiencies, and number two, history lesson. On point number one, coverage analysis deficiencies. Mr. Dominic Veleco of the firm VCOM Telecommunications provided the town of New Canaan with a statement of work for doing a cell service coverage analysis back on February 19th, February 9th. Curiously, the SOW document, which I have here, remained unposted on the town website for 36 days until it was finally posted last Friday, March 17th. This late posting means the SOW has been intentionally kept inaccessible for examination to the public. And just for the record, in the March 7 board meeting, it was said the SOW fee would be $9,700. I have the transcript of that here in front of me. But the actual fee is quoted in the SOW is $12,950, more than a 33, 33% higher. But beyond the higher-than-originally-stated fee, a quick review of that SOW reveals at least three fundamental deficiencies. The first SOW deficiency is that the scope of the proposal is limited to measuring, at best, signal coverage. There is nothing in the analysis methodology that is intended to measure incremental service need from a New Canaan resident customer experience standpoint, nor is there anything in the analysis methodology that is intended to measure, even if there is any incremental service need, whether New Canaan residents believe or do not believe that building a 185-foot tower at the West School Option B or C sites is worth it. The second SOW deficiency is that there is no upfront agreed-to-action standard. Exactly what kind of an analysis result will constitute satisfactory versus unsatisfactory service? I've been in the research business for 20-plus years and personally directed more than 783 marketing research studies. I can tell you, based on that experience, that research of any type 101 best practice is that the action standard must be explicitly declared upfront and before, not after, the analysis work begins. But this SOW does not mention action standard in any manner. The third SOW deficiency is that there is zero explanation of how VCOM is going to give you, for $12,950, a report deliverable that is in any way comparable to what you paid Centerline Solutions $45,000 to do back in 2014. I have to ask, can any of you think of any professional services where prices have declined like that over the past nine years? Perhaps we should have VCOM go to work at the price of eggs at our supermarket. Maybe they could help us out on that consumer inflation. On point number two, history lesson. The situation of the 185-foot West School Option B and C towers reminds me of when I was in graduate school, and my history professor, the late scholar Dr. Frank Pagays, was talking. Dr. Pagays lectured that, quote, "From the time of the ancient Greeks until today, government leaders get into trouble when they rush into things." But today, there seems to be a rush to approve the VCOM SOW. There is a rush to approve the SOW, even though it is not a true demand study, and there is no agreed-to-action standard. There is a rush to approve the SOW, even though the public has intentionally been given virtually no time to review it, digest it, or offer thoughtful comments on it. There is a rush to approve the SOW, even though the hearing on health risks requested earlier by the town council has not even been scheduled. There is a rush to approve the SOW, even though the ecological impact of erecting a 185-foot tower in known wetlands has not been explored at all by anyone to any, at any level. There is a rush to approve the SOW, even though there has been absolutely no review by the town council by planning and zoning, or by a revitalized version of the Utilities Commission. There is a rush to approve the SOW, even though the very idea of a 185-foot cell tower at West School Site B or C is a brand-new proposal on which there has been zero opportunity for public review, consideration, and comment. The concerns you, as Selectmen, are hearing today are prima facie evidence that your constituents believe that the 185-foot cell tower at West School Option B or C is the wrong technology, in the wrong place, with the wrong advocates, for the wrong reason. By rushing to approve the VCOM SOW today, you may be taking a step toward miring yourselves and your community in what will play out to be a New Canaan cell service Vietnam. Chaos can potentially be avoided if you today choose to vote no on the VCOM SOW. Thank you for listening.
Liz Chow.
Yes, good morning. Thank you all very much for the opportunity to comment. My husband, Ed, and I live at 87 Llewellyn Drive, and we do wish to make some comments today regarding both the cell coverage analysis and the tower itself. We firmly believe, as do so many of our fellow residents, that we absolutely need a complete new study done of cell coverage in New Canaan. And this needs to be done by a company selected through a competitive bidding process and done thoroughly, so that we fully incorporate the current state of cell service and the availability of the latest technologies, boosters, Wi-Fi, different carriers. And I don't think we want to go down a path of wasting money, building yet another towering monstrosity that the town and its residents don't want or need, and that will clearly harm the quality of life and potentially the health of our residents. We would like to see the town council, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and a reconstituted Utilities Commission thoroughly vet the state of cell coverage in New Canaan through a competitively awarded bid process and all options available, and if any additional investment is found to be needed. Based on today's agenda, it does not seem that this thorough vetting process is happening, and we would expect nothing less from our elected officials. As it relates to the latest proposals put forth for this 185-foot tower at the end of Llewellyn Drive, it goes against all common sense and everything our elected leaders, and indeed Homeland Towers have said about such a tall tower in the past. The elevation at the end of 87 Llewellyn, excuse me, the elevation at the end of Llewellyn is extremely low. The area is a wetland, and the proposed tower would have to be built at 185 feet in order to provide the benefits needed to profit the cell carriers. This height would far exceed the 110-foot cap the town itself has placed on cell towers. Why make an exception in this case? Such a tall tower would have, as stated by Homeland Towers, on multiple occasions, a significant visual impact over Llewellyn Drive and the broader neighborhood around it. Furthermore, there is no demonstrated need for this tower. The tower town is relying on information from a study conducted almost 10 years ago. In the fast-changing world of cell service, that is a lifetime. There is no data to support the idea that residents need this tower. There is no data to support the idea that first responders need this tower either. Finally, I would comment that the lack of transparency from our elected leaders has been very disappointing. The residents of our neighborhood have never been contacted by the town regarding its Plan B or Plan C, both of which would probably be unnecessary and result in significant damage to our quality of life. The latest map posted yesterday suddenly includes not only the Plan B, but also a brand-new Plan C, which likewise would be very visually damaging. The rushed, last-minute, behind-the-scenes nature, the way these proposals are being put forth, does not reflect a thoughtful process led by elected officials serving those who put them in office. In summary, this proposal is too rushed, too ill-considered, too ill-conceived, too ill-supported, and very much contrary to what our Selectmen and their cell tower advisors have said all along are the parameters within which they are willing to allow cell towers to be built in our town. This proposal needs to be pulled now. This bad idea needs to be stopped now before it goes any further. It needs to be pulled so that a proper study can be conducted to determine what, if anything, the town needs to build at this point. Our cell service is just fine, and it seems most residents feel the same way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Chip Murray.
Can you hear me? Okay, well, let me turn on my video, but that's fine.
We're going to allow you to start your video if you'd like. There you go.
Thank you. Chip Murray, Carriage Lane. Yesterday, we received information about a last-minute Option C, which is a proposal for 185-foot cell tower 335 feet closer to West School than Option B. I am now convinced the town, the residents in the town of Canaan are being forced to play a game of whack-a-mole. As soon as one location is rejected, another one magically reemerges. I'm going to focus my remarks on Option B. However, almost everything I will say will also pertain to Option C. It has been well documented that the town of Canaan has declared in numerous locations on the town website that there is a 110-foot height limit, height limit for cell towers on town property, specifically those at West School and Irwin Park. It has also been documented that Homeland Towers believes a tower on West School property near Llewellyn Drive, Option B or C, is not viable because Llewellyn is too low, too wet, and that a tower in the site would have a significant visual impact for neighbors. What has been slightly less documented is a discussion at the October 24, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. There were some very interesting quotes when specifically discussing the West School Llewellyn Drive cell tower. One commissioner said, quote, "It looks pretty wet to me, and so building there would be difficult." Another commissioner said, I believe this was the chair of the commission at the time, "If you're living down on Llewellyn, it would look really, really high." But perhaps the most interesting quote from the October 24 P&amp;Z meeting was from the first Selectman, who said, quote, "I thought this commission made it very clear when you studied that you don't want very tall towers. 186-foot tower would be the tower we just thought was off your limits, and it raises other issues such as the visibility by other neighbors." So just to recap, the town website says we can't build towers on West School property taller than 110 feet. Homeland Towers says Llewellyn is too low, too wet, and that would have a significant visual impact for neighbors. Several commissioners on the P&amp;Z Commission say Llewellyn is too low, too wet, and that would have a significant visual impact for neighbors. The first Selectman says the Llewellyn Tower, Llewellyn Tower would need to be, quote, "very tall", and that this site raises, quote, "other health, other issues such as the visibility by other neighbors." Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Schmitz.
Good morning, Selectmen. Steve Schmitz of 87 Bay Bear, I'm sorry, of 110 Woodfield Lane and 87 Bay Berry, I should say. I represent Jan and Schmitz by legal proxy. Two areas I'll hit on really quickly because all of my, I'm sorry, I don't have video available on my thing. My, my resident, my co-residents have done such a fantastic job speaking. I'll make this very short. The wetlands area. The wetlands area in discussion is really wetlands. It's not fake wetlands that the town cooked up to keep somebody from expanding their yard. This is real wetlands with skunk cabbage and a stream. I spent most of my life, my, you know, childhood life roaming around those woods. I used to have forts back there. It hasn't changed. Every native species of four-legged creature lives in there. Most of the birds we have around here, hawks, wild turkeys live in there. It is really a resource that I don't think most people appreciate. And I don't, I'm, I'm not a water engineer, but I have to imagine it plays a critical role in the drainage of the west side. I mean, imagine if we had a rain event like California's having right now. You know, this tower is going to get all, you know, the foundation will sink and the tower will collapse. Those kind of rain events can happen. So I feel like that the whole area should probably be put into a conservation easement or some sort of protective legal device to keep this from keep coming back over and over and over. You know, who knows what's next? Secondly, I'll go on to this new study. As I previously noted, I'm a business developer, and when I pay consultants, I get to review the report before they present it, and they essentially say what I want them to say, or they don't say it at all. I'm sorry, that's just the way it works with consultants. A computer model is even more malleable. A computer model says what the programmer wants it to say. And, and that's why the cost has gone down so, so much to some guy's using a model, he already programmed for another town, and he's going to think it works for us. So if you think getting a shill of a consultant to say what you want to say is bad, a computer program, a model, and I'm a modeler, to say what you want it to say is even more suspect. So I agree with all of my residents. This is a horrible idea. Stop making us play whack-a-mole. We all have full-time jobs, and this is very expensive in our time and efforts. Thank you.
The next is Edward Chow, and we're going to ask you to start your video. There you go.
Hi, can you hear me? Thank you. I just wanted to make this very quick. My wife, Elizabeth Chows, just spoke before. We, she grew up in Llewellyn Drive. And together, our families have been here since the 1980s, and we love New Canaan and we love our neighborhood. And I just want to, don't want to repeat what my, my neighbors have said and my fellow residents have said, but I just want to add my voice and say I'm incredibly disappointed by this. It seems this proposal lacks transparency, is rushed, and let's, please, let's not go down this rabbit hole because this is going to take time and effort and be very expensive. And I think you're going to meet strong opposition to this, so we, I would urge you to reconsider this. Thank you very much.
Okay, Sherry Pinklestein, and again, we'll allow you to start your video.
Yeah, hi. This is Sherry. It's Sherry Krag. I apologize for that. I'm on Winfield Lane. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. In brief, I also, I wrote a letter in, in advance because I wasn't sure if I'd be able to dial in today. I believe that'll be read at the end, so I won't, I won't repeat the letter. I do share the same concerns as my residents, being on Winfield. I was involved in, in Option A. I'm obviously involved in Option B, and in fact, Option C will be directly behind my house. I believe if I read that right, it might even be 185 feet from this 185 tower. I did speak at the last Board of Selectmen meeting regarding wetlands because I do have wetland soils. I do have wetlands. I can personally vouch for the amount of streams that come and go based on rains. Could be a little bit of rain. It could be a lot. It is very, very wet back there. In fact, we can't even grow grass. We laugh at our, our, our fake grass all the time, and after last week's rain, we now have mud. So that's just being a backyard. And this property that you're looking at is even lower than my property, which means it would just be even worse. Again, I do agree with the residents. I would urge you to, you know, consider these options, to listen to what we all have to say, and keep in mind, you know, we all love this town, and we're there for a reason, and we want to make sure that we keep our kids and our towns and our properties safe. So thank you again for letting me speak.
I don't see anybody else with your hand raised online. I don't see anybody else in the room.
Okay. I think we heard you. No, nothing's going to be rushed today. I don't, I propose we don't take any action today other than listening to Ray Vergatti. I would emphasize, you know, this is not a Homeland Towers issue. This is not a Kevin Moynihan issue. This is Verizon and AT&amp;T. They want to improve their service. It surprised the hell out of me that Verizon showed up last April and said we want to build a tower on the west side of town. We need a tower. We need improved cell service, but obviously, not surprisingly, as we experienced with the transfer station, the post tower back with AT&amp;T, and when was it, 2000?
Two times ago.
Long time ago. So, but Ray Vergatti is here. So I propose we listen to Ray's presentation on behalf of really Verizon and AT&amp;T, and, and we'll decide where to go.
I'm for Option N, which is no rush and maybe never.
Well.
Thank you. The whack-a-mole aspect that's been raised concerns me too, and it just seems like we keep doubling down. Okay, we can't go here, let's go here. And I mean, at some points, this has got to stop.
Well, the, the issue is really, you know, Verizon and AT&amp;T are the primary, and T-Mobile. Pardon me?
We're, we're not here to...
No, I agree, but you know, in terms, in terms of the, of the, of the towns. Okay, so if you don't want to have discussion today, so.
Well, I, I, I think that what we've heard, and I, and we continue to hear, and I applaud the citizens who have spoken to us. I think it's fair to just listen to what those options are. And Ray, you know, thank you for being here, just discuss it because we're all learning this at the same time you are. And I think it's appropriate that, you know, we, we listen to what we know thus far, and then we make a decision based on that information, which we don't have right now. So let's go through the process.
We, we also have a Utilities Commission that's about to get up and run, and I think it's important that we incorporate them into the process.
Yeah, so I was going to add that the, the re-establishment of the Utilities Commission is important to many of us. And that's going to go through a process that the town council, they've done a review, their subcommittee has done a review. Think it's being brought before them. Is it next week? But I think it's next week. So that'll be good. We, we have also been, and again, I'll put out my public statement. We encourage anybody who is interested in considering the Utilities Commission to send, to send us your, a letter and your CV. And we have received a couple, so we're moving forward with that. So that's exciting. So I think the timing will work in terms of, you know, we want to learn about this, but as well as the Utilities Commission will learn about it. So I, I will argue that while it seems rushed, the information is being made available. We're, we're evaluating, we're listening at the same time you are. The Utilities Commission, hopefully, once it's reestablished, will also have that opportunity. So, you know, a journey of a thousand miles starts with a single step, and there's been a lot of steps in this process. And we, we, we welcome the opportunity to learn more. So. I'm losing my voice, but so if, if we may, I'd like to hear more about it today.
Yeah, no, I'm, okay, Ray's here. I'm certainly always willing to listen. It just, for me, it's a high bar. Because as I said at the outset, when this first came up in the depth of the summer and everybody was elsewhere. You know, this town has been through so much over the past few years between COVID and now we have the economy concerns there, and it's been, you know, affordable housing has engendered a lot of emotion. I mean, I just don't, this is such an emotional issue, and I just don't personally see the need. Now, I'm willing to listen and to hear about, you know, what the, what the coverage is. And I, I do think it's important that we get the input from the residents as to what they want. You know, do they have cell phone service? I mean, I know, I've got AT&amp;T, and I have pretty good service all over town. So that's critical to me. That, to me, that's another piece of this puzzle. Maybe we do a survey or something like that, which we've done.
We've done that. It's, I, I think the consumer demand portion is missing right now.
Exactly.
And so, and I think we have done that study with 12 or so years ago.
Yep.
So I'd like to see that.
And if we have to spend more money than we did a few years ago, you know, so be it, if, if, you know, but it's got to be done right, and it can't be rushed.
Ray?
Are we going to move that on the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Let's, let's do our agenda, then we'll go back to that. With everyone here, if they want to stay.
Do you want to move it?
Why don't we move, move to have Ray's presentation now?
Let's do that. In fairness to the good folks that came out.
Yeah. I'll, I'll make a motion.
Second? Okay. Aye.
Aye. And we're going to table the
Yes.
B. Okay.
Why don't we move that to then?
What's that?
Why don't we move that? Because this is a separate, that's a separate item.
We just tabled it, the VCOM.
Did somebody make a motion?
I'll make a motion to table the VCOM.
Second here.
Okay, right.
Into the lion's den.
I'm in, and I, do I have the capability to share? I'm sharing.
Ray, why don't we introduce you? You've been here before. So Ray's been involved with New Canaan for a lot of years. I think you built the Silver Hill Tower for T-Mobile. And then you were selected, Homeland Towers was selected pursuant to an RFP in 2014.
16.
15.
Yeah.
And a plan was developed to improve cell service, and under that, you did the Soundview Lane Tower for AT&amp;T. As a lead, Verizon is being added to that tower. And T-Mobile will also be added to that tower. You actually worked in the summer of 2017 on a replacement for the antennas at the Wavy Water Tank, developing a plan for a tower that was going to have to be taller than the Wavy Water Tank. And that, that tower become unnecessary once Aquarian agreed to keep their antennas on that water tank. And then you've been working on the Upper Ponus Ridge Tower, the northwest corner of town, which is critical for our public safety radio. And so you've had a long experience in New Canaan. Are you going?
Thank you, Selectmen Moynihan. For the record, Ray Vergatti with Homeland Towers. I'm the regional manager. Been doing the tower business throughout New England for approximately 22, 23 years. I know the landscape very well. I know the process very well.
Right, who did the tower at the exit 38? Who did the AT&amp;T and Verizon Towers?
The Norwalk Armory?
Yeah.
That was AT&amp;T.
They did it directly?
Yeah. I think the plan for that one was two unipoles. I believe one is up right now. Thank you for having me this morning. And there's obviously history, as Mr. Moynihan just explained. My first prelude into this town was Silver Hill Hospital. Second site I did was Soundview Lane next to St. Luke's School. We have an approval to build a third site on Upper Ponus Ridge crossing the reservoir, Laurel Reservoir.
Actually, you also proposed Irwin Park and...
Yes, we've had a number of proposals, obviously. So you know, and as I mentioned, doing this for so long, it's, I hear the same comments. I hear the public say there's, there's no need. I hear the health concerns. I hear the people play the property value. I hear people talk about aesthetics and so forth. We don't drive the need. The carriers drive the need. The Verizons, the T-Mobiles, the AT&amp;Ts. You folks did a Centerline study back in, I think, 2014, and identified various parts of town that had coverage gaps and most likely next sites. We've looked at that guide, and as I mentioned, we've filled three of those four holes that we believe are valid. Your own study confirmed that. You did an online study with residents. People talked about the lack of cell coverage, and I think the overwhelming consensus was 90, 90-some odd percent felt it was...
That was back in 2012. Obviously, we've come a long way.
A long way. Nothing's come a long way on the west side. There's been no new sites built.
But technologies have come a long way too, not just satellite phones.
Verizon has...
At that point, while, while we're here, you know, last week, the FCC proposed rules that would allow direct satellite to device as, as the Apple iPhone is doing. Right? So that, so you know, this whole area of satellite, but I think, you know, we, we will get into the issue of new technology.
Right.
Because the reality is satellite may, you know, the police department has two satellite radios. They, they cost $8,000 apiece. Pardon me? Well, again, that's, that's the whole issue about, you know, where are we in technology?
Yeah. Yeah. That's certainly open for discussion. Towers are needed. Rooftop sites are needed. Macro sites are needed. Small cells are needed. Satellite is not going to replace, replace this in the foreseeable future. Excuse me. It's not, and that's what the engineers, and those are opinions that people have, and you have to follow the facts and science here.
It really comes down to how Verizon and AT&amp;T, T-Mobile are going to deliver service to their customers.
So getting to the need portion here, you know, I, I'm not here to prove the need. I'm a developer. The burden of the need is on the carriers. When they go before the siting council, the burden on them is to prove that a site is needed in a given area, it's justified, and the height that they're asking for is justified. I don't do that. Homeland does not get into that. We simply present what the carriers need. Now Verizon's been before the town council, Board of Selectmen, various boards here, and they have shown their coverage maps. People have an opinion or a feeling that they don't believe it because they can make a phone call. Well, because you can make a phone call doesn't mean there's not a need. AT&amp;T wrote a letter stating if a tower's built on the west side here, that they would go on it. The gentleman for Centerline, and it's my understanding Centerline is no longer in business, but John Keating back in November. I will admit, it was a very long and drawn-out and kind of lost people, but the message at the end of his synopsis was towers needed. You have another study before you or speaking about a study from VCOM, and I welcome it. Have this third party. I'm not here to spend a million dollars because I don't think that there's a need. I think there's a need, absolutely. I've driven the area. I've been at the school during pickup times. I can't get a phone call out on my Verizon phone. And that's a fact.
No, the interesting thing is the town, for our own employees, uses Verizon.
Yeah.
And Verizon clearly has been absent for years.
Yeah, but it's not just Verizon. It's the other carriers. And you've had, you've had, you've had, you've had your public safety spokes get up and speak to the importance of coverage and how they use cellular to keep in touch with their volunteers and so forth. So getting to this whole need, I, I don't, I don't prove the need. The carriers prove it, obviously. But make no bounds about it. There is a need. My 23 years of developing sites, people play that card all the time. Oh, there's no need. I can make a phone call. Well, okay, maybe you have Wi-Fi in your house. You can make a phone call. Maybe you're on the ridge. You can make a phone call sometimes. It's not what's called a reliable network. And I don't get into designing the network. The carriers design it. Just like the average resident doesn't dictate to ever-source or a water company on where a pipe should go or where a utility line should go. These engineers know what's best for their network needs, and I follow their lead. I don't sit there and throw a dart at a map and say, I'm going to put a tower on the west side. I look at the science. I look at the facts. I look at the coverage gaps. There was a need on Valley Road, Silver Hill Hospital. I filled it. There was a need in the northeast corner up by St. Luke's. I filled it. There was a need in the northwest corner. We're filling it. There's still a need on the west side, and don't fool yourself. It exists. No matter what opposition may want to say, and look, opposition, I get it. People that show up, there's a silent... People that show up, there's a silent. Majority out there. And that was from your. From your survey.
Back then, two thousand twelve.
And don't fool.
The question is, we have, we have to understand the 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 public sentiment about need.
Absolutely. And I get it. When I look at everyone in opposition, you know, before they even speak, I can guess what street they're on. They're from Bennington. They're from Winfield. They're from Carriage. They're from Lewell. And I get it.
Go back to Danbury.
And I get it. And I I can't, I can't please everybody. We're trying to do the best job here. So when. People want to fault us for playing the whack-a-mole game, what I'm trying to do is give options to the town. You have a forty-seven point forty-seven acre parcel. It's an excellent parcel. For a sou- a tower. We originally were up by the water tank. And we were at a hundred and ten feet. Because that's what we told the town. We would keep our sites at a hundred and ten feet. No, by the way, on the three sites I've done on private property. We're at a hundred and ten feet or lower.
How many sites did we look at in prior years? Was it just the one that was next to the water tower? When we looked in this property?
Property? I've literally been a ping pong ball on this property and I'd say I probably moved this tower, Nick. Six or seven times.
Tells you something and it's still not built.
It tells me that people complain when it's near the school because they talk about the health and safety and I get it. Okay, nine hundred feet is nine hundred feet. We've provided a health and study. It's engineered, it's science, it's facts, but people have opinions and feelings. We understand that and we acknowledge that. So we moved further from the school. I think we were at initially five hundred fifty. And then we moved it further down. I think we were at seven hundred and then a town asked, can you get further away? So we were at nine hundred. Okay, and it's my understanding that Town Council has talked about option A is really. Coming off the table. So I've given B and C. As options, not because I think they're better. No, absolutely not.
A is the best.
A is the best, hands down.
John Goodman decided to bring option A forward rather than even talk about another option. Because he thought.
And it didn't work, Town Council, so.
Well, you know, it's unfortunate because.
It's unfortunate for you.
Given the Town Council of visuals. You know, I I'm not sure how much they've they've vetted. Option A. I think it's, as I've set on the record, checks all the boxes for the carriers.
Yep.
So we've gone to option B on Llewellyn. It is a hundred and eighty-five foot structure. It is absolutely. Seventy-five feet taller than a hundred and ten feet that we would like to do.
Of A versus B and C.
Elevation is three hundred and ten feet for option A.
I beg your pardon?
Three hundred and ten feet for option A.
Is the total of the elevation plus the proposed?
It's the ground elevation is three ten and we have a hundred forty-five foot tower proposed at option A. The reason why we're proposing a hundred and eighty-five feet tower at option B or C, the ground elevation is two seventy. So there's a net loss of forty feet. So we take the tower on option A at one forty-five. You have to add forty feet. It's line of sight. I don't pick that number. I don't pick one eighty-five.
And the land of, I understand.
Yeah.
And and the. One of these illustrations I saw had the four towers on it, right? So. Excuse me, not the four towers, the four carriers, excuse me. The four carriers were listed on option.
We show on a tower profile, we always build our towers.
If you didn't have the the as many as four, let's say you capped it at two. Would there still be the demand from the carriers? We haven't talked about the demand from the consumer yet, but. If you just made that a lower tower, is that lopping off what another forty feet?
No, it's not. Verizon needs one eighty, one hundred and eighty-one feet for the centerline. Verizon needs one eighty-one.
Well, who would take the lower ones?
AT&T, T-Mobile, Dish Wireless. In the tower business, it's nice to be on a top spot. Not everyone could be on a top spot.
They pay more to be on?
It's not necessarily paying more. It's usually the first one. Verizon is an applicant on this process with with Homeland Towers. So they would have the top spot. They're quote unquote the anchor on this project. On Soundview was AT&T. AT&T took the lead. They have the top spot. Verizon is below AT&T and that's how the tower business works.
I see. Thank you for that. Talk to me about public safety. Options B and C, are we still, are they still? You know, viable in terms of public safety?
What I told the first selectman is, look, I've heard you loud and clear and, you know, I've been a ping pong. Whack-a-mole, whatever you want to call it, on this forty-seven acre parcel. We've always talked about option B. And yes, I've said on the record.
Who's we? Who's we?
Sorry, you're talking about option A or option B?
Option B, Homeland. I've always said option B is much lower. It is definitely wet down there. There's there's wetlands. There's no doubt about it. We've only put forward option C with the caveat that we don't know if it can be completed. We have wetlands. We have environmental impacts, potential. We know there are potential for vernal pools on that property. Now. Vernal pool may not mean anyone, anything to the layman, but that comes with spotted salamanders. It comes with the wood frog. Fairy shrimp. And this is something that the Siding Council, when they look at locations, they look for a site that's going to have the least. Impact, be it visual or environmental.
So why is there option C at all?
Because there was a comment by some members, can you push it even further off of Llewellyn? Because we know when we come from option A. And we bring it down to option B off Llewellyn and I'm two hundred and some odd feet off the cul-de-sac. That now we've poked a whole other area of residence. Hence, if you look at the addresses, people speaking today from Llewellyn and Carrot Drive. So we've said, okay, we're going to push the envelope and try to push it even further in. Option C. Look, I'm never going to make anybody happy. I think I can probably be on a five hundred acre parcel and someone's going to find fault with it. So we're trying to do the best job as we can, so. The whole whack-a-mole option is something that we're trying to provide. I think you understand that.
I just want to go through the the facts if you could be so kind. So, okay, so so C is, sounds to me like it's really not.
Well, I think what we would do with C, if this project goes forward. We would lease with the town. Two options. We've done this before. Option C and option B. And we would make the commitment to say, if this is what the town wants, if option C is preferred by the town. We will lease two portions on the property, C and B. We would go into Siding Council. As the primary candidate, this is what the town wants, option C. The Siding Council may scrutinize option C, as I mentioned, and say, well, you have a. Thirty-foot wetland crossing at the end of Llewellyn. You have an approximately seventy-five foot crossing further in to get to option C. And you've got potential for impact to the wetlands. And the Siding Council may in fact say. You have other viable options on the property, even though the town's your landlord and this is what their preference. So. They may say, we're going to deny option C. But we're okay with option B. So I think what I'm telling. The Board of Select this morning is. We're prepared to go into council with two options, spend the money. And let the council, with the town's guidance and preference, pick the location.
Just to be clear, you're seeing Siding Council, not Town Council.
Siding Council, Siding Council. Ultimately, before it ever got to the Siding Council, this would go to. Town Council, P and Z, back to Board of Selectmen and so forth.
Thank you.
Look, do I want to be in B and C? No, A is, A is the spot. It's the best location.
Could you comment on the reference to the aquarium water?
So we have to do further due diligence. I think what I've seen on some Suriya maps from the town, there is an Ingress and Egress that is twenty-foot wide. Coming in off of Llewellyn. And. That's for access to get to the pipe. I've seen another thirty or thirty-five foot wide access that actually is the. Pipe which seems to follow the existing dirt road, which is on the far south of the property. But we would have to do further due diligence on some deed work. Some maps that are referenced because this kind of B and C, it's, it's just kind of blossomed. Because it sounds like A is going away. And that's fine. If the town doesn't want to have A. Their decision. I don't. I can't sit here right now and say there's no impact to the aquarium pipe. From what I've seen, it looks like the pipe follows the dirt road and we're not touching it or coming near it. But we'd have to obviously do some, some, some work. I never build a site or lease it without understanding what our entitlements are on restrictions or covenants or who has existing easements or right-of-way on a property. And I know the folks at Aquarian, you know, we can work with them and understand where their infrastructure is. Last thing we want to do is. Impact it during construction. I will tell you, towers don't sink. They don't fall over if there's a flood for this area. But anyway, so so that's really why I'm here today is just to kind of give an update on it. I I can, you know, I I have a screen share showing the A, B, and C options. I provided an aerial. This week to your first selectman on your tax map, kind of as a reference. This particular site plan. We've really detailed it on setbacks to property lines.
Could you share that with us, new?
Ray, did you have a visual yet?
So, yes, I actually received a view shed this morning.
Yeah.
From Saratoga Associates. And. We've always said option A. When we looked at the view shed at a hundred forty-five feet because of the terrain and topography in New Canaan. There's no views that are seasonal views, meaning when the leaves are on, this tower is buried. There was point seven acres where it's viewed above the treetops at option A when it's a hundred forty-five feet. Common sense would think when you move it. Down below to Llewellyn. And you're going to one eighty-five, that there's potential there. And I've said, I think on the record, there's a likelihood for a more visual impact for a hundred and eighty-five foot tower. Just common sense would maybe dictate. Well, they ran the view shed.
Who's they?
Saratoga and Associates. I just pulled it up.
And and how are they compensated? Saratoga Associates.
They are consultant. They testify. They're the visual experts. They're the ones.
Who's paying them?
We do. Yeah, absolutely.
Homeland Towers.
Homeland Towers. We use them all the time. They're consultant. They're the experts. They have the technology to run these view sheds. And what I pulled up before you is. Option C.
What does this show?
So this shows. Half mile in a one-mile radius. It shows the option C here. This is the. Half-mile circle radius. This is the one-mile radius.
What's that? What's that on the right? Is that Erwin?
Uh, this is just open. I'm not sure what.
See, I suspect the one, one area that would see this tower would be the west side of Weed Street.
So. Purple, if you look at the key here. Purple is where the tower is visible above the trees.
I can't see anything.
So here's, so here's what's really interesting. The only purple on this map. There's a slice on Winfield. This purple right here. And there's a slice which I believe may be Erwin. A sliver. It's amazing that the view shed. At. Option A. Is point seven acres. Saratoga ran this this morning for me. They sent it over. It's point seven acres on this lower elevation as well. Because the terrain is so difficult. And and so forth in this area. So it's an apples to apples. So when people say, well, it's going to be visual, everyone's going to see, no. Will there be views with leaf off? During this winter seasons? Yes, I'm not going to say that. There's not going to be views through the trees. But again, we're on a wooded parcel. We are setback.
It's just like the Country Club Tower. You know, you can't see the Country Club Tower if you're within the immediate area. But from the top of Owen Oak Ridge, you can see that above the tree line, so.
Yeah.
Well, that's the point. You know, the question is. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we would, we would actually, we have, we've said it from the get-go, you know. I would have done separate balloon floats, probably premature.
We can't do balloon floats because there's not enough helium. So you can't do balloon floats anymore.
Helium's been very difficult to, uh, to get a hold of.
Can you comment on lights?
Seriously, they won't do.
There's a bunch of balloons outside here. You can lift them up.
So.
Can you comment on lights?
Yeah.
Tower?
Yeah. Typically. Towers are lit when they're taller than a hundred ninety-nine feet. Or when there's an FAA issue, meaning a nearby airport and you're in a flight path. We ran FAA and option A. There's no lighting required. I would highly doubt. And and I have not run a full FAA on B or C, but I would highly doubt that any light is needed. I would be ninety-nine percent. I hate to say positive, but we don't, we don't like lighting towers.
Something you have to also further.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We we run, there's a whole bunch of due diligence that we run at the end of the day to understand what we're looking at. So this tower should not be lighted, period.
On the issue of of wetlands and so would the inland wetlands?
Siding Council makes that decision because they have their own inland wetlands experts and.
Correct.
Local commission does not have any jurisdiction.
We don't.
That's the whole point of the Siding Council.
Yeah.
Yeah. And and they they take it very seriously.
That's why he's kind of dubious that they'll.
Yeah, and and they have scientists that sit on their board. They have engineers that sit on the council and they scrutinize this. That's why I'm saying, even though option C is on paper and before the town. As an option, I have concerns. My soil scientist, my environmental scientist has concerns. Because it's an impact. Yes, in a perfect world, do I want to be there if option A is off the table? Yeah, because I'm further in off of Llewellyn. Option B, I'm still pretty far in. I think I'm over two hundred feet from the cul-de-sac. It's a wooded parcel. I'm only doing one wetland crossing of thirty feet approximately versus two for option C. So there'd be additional due diligence, but you know, I would make it crystal clear to the town. If we go down this project and we lease it. We have to have the option of. If C is a preferred option, have C and a B. I'm not going to go with the council with, set myself up to fail with one option.
Yeah.
Right. Could I ask you to address the issue of alternative technology? Because Verizon's putting a bunch of small cells around town. They've done it by eight or nine. And that's helped them. Fill some spots that.
Small cells, what you're talking about for people on Zoom are typically installations where the carriers put. Antennas on the top of utility pole, typically within the right-of-way on a forty-foot wood laminate pole. Sometimes they replace it with a steel pole. A small cell is to fill a discrete. Coverage hole. When I say discreet. Quarter mile, eighth of a mile. It's not there to serve like a tower site. And I hear people all the time, oh, why can't you just do small cells? Well. I think Verizon has testified it's not feasible to do small cells in this area because it's terrain. It's all line of sight technology. So you have small cells throughout town that are very strategically placed to fill those discrete. Holes. And the way the carriers look at it is. They look to provide macro coverage, which is broad coverage through towers. And then once they establish that. Broad coverage, they still find there's a a discrete hole. That's a candidate for a small cell. Small cells do not solve coverage gaps. Large coverage gaps. They do not operate with backup power.
What are they on solar?
I don't believe they're on anything for backup. They may have some batteries in there and they're, usually they hang the equipment box on the telephone pole. I don't get involved with the small cells. The carriers do that directly for themselves.
Is the towers, the big towers, when antiquated technology or they just. Become obsolete?
What happens to them?
Yeah.
Yeah. They would come out. There's, there's, and there's a condition by the Siding Council, if the tower is ever not operable or inactive for a period. I think it's ninety days or a hundred twenty days. The council can dictate to say, take it down.
And who pays for that?
There's thousands of thousands. Are we prepared for that?
Who pays for that?
Oh. Only would pay for it, but we also put language in our leases, especially with municipalities. We have no problem posting a removal bond. In the event this technology ever became obsolete, there's language in there that a removal bond is set aside. To take a tower down. It's not that expensive to take it down and the value in the steel is probably a wash. It's rather expensive to build these sites. These million-dollar sites we're talking about with the infrastructure that we're putting in. And this is, this is critical. I've, I've made no bones about it. This is critical of water, sewer, electric. Everyone uses cell phones these days.
So on that score and. The, sorry, the, the micro cells that are put up, did you say seven or so have been?
I think Verizon has eight or nine now.
So, so I'm, I'm, I'm curious that I would imagine the gap issues are not as prevalent as they were twelve years ago. When we first took a look at this.
So the gap issues over by Silver Hill, up in the northeast and in northwest are certainly not as significant. Because those are being filled with macro towers that are a hundred and ten.
What about these micro towers?
These micro towers fill a discrete gap.
Yeah, but how much of it?
Well, see, the reason Verizon is putting. Small cells downtown is because the antennas on the on their name locas are only fifty-five feet tall. Right? You don't get coverage from waving water tank downtown.
Yeah.
Signal doesn't come down that far.
If Verizon could do a small cell here. It's a quick and dirty, quick, quick. They go to Siding Council. They go through, through, through the state process. It's not a tower application. Doesn't get drawn out for nine months to a year.
We've had neighbors complain about.
Of course, everyone's going to complain. Near them. We get it. We we hear them. But yes, they'll complain about it being in front of their house and the box has red and green lights on it and. And so forth, but you don't, you know, if the carriers can solve the coverage gap. and so forth. But um, you don't, you know, if the carriers can solve the coverage gap with a small cell, they would. And we hear it all the time. Technology, technology, why can't you put a DAS system in? It's a distributed antenna system. Take a bunch of small cells and string them together. You can engineer anything. It's just not cost prohibitive or feasible. I can build a tower out, as I said, in the middle of Long Island Sound. I would have to go down, I don't know, maybe a hundred feet for a foundation through the water. You could engineer it. Would be cost effective.
So do you want to proceed with this uh, discussion further with Ray today or do you want to?
Okay, I got enough.
Yes. Yeah. So, um.
More to do.
More to do. Yeah. I mean, is there more you'd like to say today? I mean, we obviously have, have more homework to do. The idea of a study, uh, and we have examples from what BCOM has done for other, other communities. You know, the reality is, uh, Tom Teslick went to Colorado to hire center line. Um, that's why it was more expensive. They had a, they travel expenses and.
Yeah, they weren't, I don't believe they were local. They were, they were out west. So, uh,
is there any more you'd like to say today?
No, no, I appreciate the opportunity before you, you know, this is just more of an informational session for, for the board here, obviously, this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I appreciate your time and 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 look, we, we hear the concerns that people raise and I'll just, I'll just state it one more time. We are not going to make everybody happy no matter where we go. And we're going to bring out other folks in other areas. I'm moving around the property. We get it.
I think we need to hear from Verizon and AT&amp;T as well because Verizon, um, again, they I think the carrier spent eighty six billion dollars to buy Spectrum last February, February twenty two. You know, they, 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 they're serious business people in terms of where they're putting their resources.
Sure.
And when they want to put a half million dollars into antennas in a location, they obviously think they have the need. So.
Well, there's, yeah, they've, they've shown that in their coverage maps. There's a hole here.
Right.
And but it's cheaper for them to do it for this.
And by the way, they don't make any more money. They've got, they've got.
In terms of the costs.
Well, it's not so much cheaper. They're paying homeland a rent to be on that tower.
Yeah.
I believe when they go on a right of way on a telephone pole. I don't know if there's any monetary.
The federal government has prohibited local municipalities from charging them for their.
So it's, so to answer your question, Kathleen, it's a much less expensive build for Verizon to do a small cell. When the technology is there to fill that gap, you can't fill a large coverage gap with terrain because this is line of sight. Line of sight technology. You have to be above the trees.
Have to update those gap.
Okay. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you for your time. Okay. Thank you very much.
So, um, unless there's anything further from anybody, um, who's here today, we'll move on to our agenda. Um, thank you for coming.
Concert.
Don't know.
So item three, uh, John.
Good morning.
More pleasant wave any water or wave any, wave any concerts?
Well, exciting. So, yeah, this year we, we're planning on having eleven.
Thank you.
Eleven concerts. And the one thing we did is we included a rain day at the end. Instead of having everybody booked up because we didn't have a rain day for the last one last year. So luckily, we were very fortunate last year. We only canceled one concert. The weather was great. So.
Exactly. Keep knocking on wood.
They get rained out. Do we pay? No, if they don't play, we don't pay. Okay. So. Any questions about, we have any concerts?
So when is the last one going to be added? Is that in September or?
Well, we, the date is August thirtieth. So the rain date's August thirty first.
August thirty first.
But we also have a September seventh rain day. If any of them can't do Wednesday or Thursday, but they are able to come back then. Yeah, we give them the ability to come, come back then.
John, do you, do you have a sense for how many people actually attend these? Do you have a?
I wish I did.
Okay.
Um, when I've been there.
Going over there. I mean, sometimes there's five hundred people there and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I've, I've tried to do a little bit of counting.
We have one.
And I don't feel very confident in my numbers. Like anywhere from, okay, could that be three hundred people or could that be seven hundred?
Yeah.
You know.
I think there's a way if you do a drone or something, there's a way to actually uh.
If we did, we had, had a picture, you'd have a much better idea.
Sure, sure.
Because you.
Okay, just curious. I, I, yeah.
Yeah. So they are well attended.
Yes, I know.
Especially on a beautiful night. It's a beautiful place to be as the sun's going down and everything.
No further questions. I'm, I move that we approve the request from Parks and Recreation to enter into contracts with multiple vendors for the two thousand twenty-three Waving Cup Summer Concert Series.
Second here.
Second, all favor.
Bye.
Bye. Okay. After school programs, before and after school programs.
For and after school programs, yes. So we have two vendors that I did not have in our original list for um PO requests way back in June. Um, new vendors that Zach's brought in and I.
This program was going to be taken over by the Board of Ed and then we decided they're not getting it done. So we're doing this.
Well, the Board of Ed started a um, an after school daycare type thing in the three elementary schools where the kids have a place to go for working parents and stuff like that. But they really wanted us to come back with our programs. Um, it's been a little bit of a challenge for space and everything else because there are some kids and they use space. But so these are, these are two vendors that we did use for after school programs.
Questions?
We use these vendors before for our BASF. What does that stand for?
Before and after school fund.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're just bringing them back.
We, we, no, we, we, we've actually we've actually used them already.
You have. Oh, I see. So we're, this is like a bad.
Approval to.
We have to get approval. They've already been in there. Okay. Okay.
Any further question? I move we approve this request from Parks and Recreation to enter into two contracts with uh Elm Street Events and Future Star Basketball for, for the number shown on our tablets, twelve thousand seven fifty seven and eleven thousand five fifty um, for the before and after school programs, otherwise known as BA.
Thinking about changing it.
Second.
Uh, I'll second, but with a question if I can. Are both these vendors, are they from New Canaan? I assume Elm Street Events.
Elm Street Events is, yes.
Canon Business or?
Future Stars Basketball. The Future Stars Basketball is from? No idea. I'm sorry. I can find out for you.
Okay.
Um, but it's not on.
Thanks.
Yep.
Did I get a second?
Yes, I did.
All favor. Hi.
Hi.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Chris and Tiger, you want to come up? Jen, you want to come up? Don't move that microphone.
One with a sign on it. Someone with a sign on it.
Yeah. We've been working on this for a while. We're ready to go. Although we're still working with.
Oh, kidding?
I would like to point out.
Move this back because that's.
I knocked it out Thursday night at the council meeting.
I did that at the P and Z meeting.
It should be taped or something.
Yeah.
It's a hazard.
When are we going to get this room fixed, Chris? Shoot.
What have we, have we lost?
That, that camera.
I heard him say it too. I heard him. Sir, there's no give and take on the cable now.
Hey, I.
Yeah, I heard. And I said, how can you do that?
Exactly. Are we coming back? There we go. Okay. So who wants to summarize? Just this Jen's been working, leading on this.
Basically, um, as was presented to BOE during budget process and presented to BOF and I presented to Town Council too, even though it's coming out of the capital budget.
It's, it, it, it's not going to be, it's coming out of the contingency.
Coming out of contingency. So we asked Town Council.
Oh, right, right. Remove it, remove it. Right, right.
So, um, Open Gov. Been um, looking into and researching with. Uh, they're in fifty communities already in Connecticut. Um, they're in one hundred and twelve in Massachusetts and the entire state of Rhode Island. So, um, we think it'll be great. Chris, um, reached out to their IT department up in Massachusetts. Because the main thing we wanted to make sure was that it can communicate to munis. So all our financials can go directly in and actually be able to pay by credit card because we're still stuck in the eighties paying by paper check only. So this is like so this is, um, we're really excited about this. It's a streamline all the departments. There's health, wetlands, P and Z, DPW engineering and building. And it will talk to the assessor database. Roseanne, um, and the tax collector will talk to, it's like by statute, when we go to relicense a restaurant, the taxes have to be paid first. Right now, that's all done manually. So we're hoping to automate everything and.
We're catching up. Okay. So thank you, Jen. Any further questions for the?
So I'm glad.
So the existing system, we're paying a fee for now that we're going to be closing down legacy system?
They haven't paid for municity in a couple of years because they never delivered on their contract.
So we're getting rid of that. Okay. All right.
Transferring the data from the building department, only the building department is on that.
And the hundred thousand dollars, is that an annual contract? Is that what we're expecting?
That's the goal upfront.
Upfront. Okay.
Broken out to about seventy thousand for the initial startup and then a twenty thousand, twenty eight thousand.
Right, that's, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's.
I mean, I gotta think this is good for the consumers of New Canaan, for the residents of New Canaan, for the employees of this town. I think the audit committee will like this because, you know, no more paper stuff.
Ann will like it because it actually.
Ann will like it.
Automatically works with.
Tucker will like it.
Unis.
Yeah, this will allow for twenty four seven submission or right now you have to come in during operating hours.
It's very customer friendly. So.
Is there a reason why we have to have a contingency?
Don't know if the, on the, on the startup, if they got extra.
The migration might take.
Okay.
Right. The company that we're going from is not well, um, first with the one that we're going to. So.
Okay.
Honestly, it's one of those things we've done as a board of selectmen. I assume we're going to vote on this, well, in favor of it. This is way up there. And this is.
Yeah.
Long overdue.
We're long overdue, right?
Yep. Okay, I move we approve this request from the IT department to enter into a contract with Open Gov for a hundred thousand dollars plus the contingency of fifteen thousand dollars for the purchase and maintenance of new land use permitting software to be utilized by several departments. Second.
Second here.
Further discussion? All favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you all.
Thanks, guys.
Let's get it done.
I'm going that way.
All right. Chris, you're up again for the uh, Microsoft Office Standard, Office Pro and Server Data Center Edition.
Yep. Um, brief description, because every ten years last time we went out, it was two thousand thirteen. Uh, we ride office as far as we can because and we save the money by buying standard. There's different flavors, right? We don't use all of the uh everything in the arsenal. Most users don't, so we don't buy the most expensive brands or uh, or options. Um, something we have to do as April, in the middle of April, Microsoft's pulling back um, any support on this and it should go another ten years. So this will be one time.
One time. Any questions?
None here.
I move we approve the request from IT to enter into a contract with SHI International Corp. And the amount of eighty eight thousand two forty two for the Microsoft Office Standard, Office Pro and Server Day, Data Center Edition. Second.
Second.
Further discussion? All favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Tiger, you're back. Do you want to talk about Playhouse now or do you want to uh?
I figured, how everyone would be doing, I figured I'd go through everything first.
Okay.
Whatever you want to do.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't like to go to the easiest one first.
Do the easy one first.
Yeah. So, uh, this is our uh, annual request for uh, the proclamation or designation of National Public Works Week in the town from May twenty first to May twenty seventh. Uh, the theme for this year is connecting the world through public works. Um the theme illustrates how public works connects us all through infrastructure and service, enhancing the quality of life for the communities these professionals serve. So, uh, we'd like your uh, approval to uh, designate May twenty one and May twenty seven. We all know how important public works is to this town.
Absolutely.
And we thank Tiger and his team for stellar job and getting us through winter and uh coming into spring when the green grass will begin to be mowed. So I, I am happy to uh, ask for approval for the uh from pu- public works to declare May twenty one, May twenty seven as National Public Work Weeks in New Canaan. Second.
Second here.
Further comments for the discussion?
Do we publish this? Do we put it out on a press release or? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good. You're right. Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Speaking of which.
Not more comments from the P and G gallery. There you go. Uh, second, third, um, all favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Tiger. Intersection redesign. Right. So this next one is the uh the intersection of one twenty three Brushy Ridge and Locusts. Um, we've been working on for several years um to enhance the pedestrian improvements there. We have a sidewalk on River Street. You have a sidewalk on Locust. But we don't have a way to cross. Um, there are actually pedestrian heads there. Meaning that you can actually press the buttons, but the buttons are actually behind the guide rail and inaccessible from the sidewalk. Um, so that wasn't our design. That was, that was the state design. The uh.
So we want to fix this.
Correct. So the uh we hired Fussin O'Neal to come in and help us navigate through the, the traffic signal updates that have to be done with the state. They um, they basically come highly recommended from the state themselves, saying who is, you know, who's your go to person? Um, Jennifer and Gina are the two that they recommended. The unfortunate thing is we had a contract that was under uh, ten thousand dollars, which was for nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And due to the amount of meetings that uh, they've had to attend, we're now exceeding that amount and the um part of our purchasing policy, according to the finance department is we exceed ten thousand dollars. We've got to go to the board of selectmen for approval. So I'm asking for an additional ten thousand dollars. Do I expect it to be ten thousand dollars? No, I don't. I expect it to be somewhere on the order three to five thousand dollars of the, of the remaining effort to get us to construction or to an encroachment permit to get, gain us to construction. I just didn't want to have to come back for a third time. So that's the uh, the overall request. Is the fact that we're tripping one portion of our purchasing policy and bringing it to another, just based upon the effort that's required um, by uh, by Fussin O'Neal. Any questions? Um, I move we approve this request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Fussin O'Neal on the amount of ten thousand dollars for the additional work related to the redesign of Route one twenty three Brushy Ridge and Locust Avenue Intersection. Second.
Second.
All favor.
One question, sorry.
Sure.
Timing on this, when do we think this will all be completed?
I wanted it two years ago. The uh, but we're working on it right now. The hope is this season is to complete. We've got a couple more meetings to go before we get past the encroachment permit process. And then we've already got a contractor on board. We have money slated. It's just a question of going out there and, and working with the DOT.
By the end of spring or summer?
I would say by the end of the season. I'm not going to say by the end of the spring because we still have to get all the people back.
And are we talking about?
Construction season. Sorry.
That, what's that date?
That's November.
November. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All favor. Hi.
Hi.
So this next is a similar request. We've had, um, we have several items that Hardisty and Hanover has been working on us for um, on-call traffic consulting services. I listed them out here. Um, this is just a uh, several of them, um, majority of them, I should say. And we're having the exact same problem where some of them are, are now tripping over the, the ten thousand dollar limit for a contract under ten thousand dollars. And uh, our purchasing policy requires us to come back. But they are, they're working on each one. The um Hardisty and Hanover was nice enough to give us an exclusive for the town, meaning that they will only work on town projects for the town. Anything else in the town, they will not work on for a private consultant. That way, if we want to hire them as our, as our um Expert, we have that right. That's why you see that there's several items here, you know, that they've been working on, um. We have meetings slated with them coming up to then try to see if we can bring some of these to fruition, some are a little bit harder, some are ongoing, um. But again, the exact same situation whereby we're gonna trip on, you can see on a couple of these, we're gonna trip past the ten thousand dollar mark, I just listed all of them here, um, just so you could see them. And, uh, we'd like, uh, approval for an additional ten thousand dollars for on-call traffic consulting services for, uh, Hardesty and Hanover for these projects.
Any questions?
One of the highest ones is the first one, the one oh six canoe and Carter, where does that stand?
We're discussing with the state, actually, uh, talked to the homeowner next door who lives on the corner, because he has some. Additional comments that he'd like, uh, brought into play, and then, um. We'll bring it back to the state. This thought is still to have this offset intersection, um. I know that our chief of police wants to see a stop sign in one direction at least, or a four-way stop, but they're not gonna allow that. So I think that the best we can do at present is this offset intersection, uh, a mini roundabout will be difficult as well, um. So that's a, that, I think that that's our best alternative is, uh, is to offset the intersection, give us a little bit of queuing length, um, and go from there.
What's your timing on that sense of that?
The exact same thing, it's just getting everyone to agree that this is what they want. So it's a little difficult, um, but we'll keep working on it. I, it's, it's an easy install. It's probably the, you know, the one on the, the, the one at one twenty-three is difficult because it involves all the traffic signals and some hardscape. This is a very easy install. It's actually just getting everyone to agree that this is what the, the method is. But again, I'm hoping to, to close out the majority of these things that are on this list by this year.
By this year.
This year, by the end of the season, that's correct.
Thank you.
I move, we approve the request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Hardesty and Hanover for an amount of ten thousand dollars for on-call traffic consulting services, as described by Tiger. Second?
Second here.
For the discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you. Uh, this next is for, uh. Purchase of, um, rapid rectangular flashing beacons for, uh, Valley Road at Silver Hill Hospital. Silver Hill Hospital came to us with, um, a concern about. Traffic and traffic calming, they have their campuses on both sides of the street, they have people, residents and, uh, um. Visitors and employees walking back and forth, um, so we agreed that we would upgrade some of the signage and refresh some of the striping. They asked if, uh, if, uh, beacons could be installed, they went to the police commission, the police commission approved it, and always said, well, we'll install the beacons, but you have to purchase them. So this is to actually purchase the, uh, the beacons themselves for twenty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, they are the similar ones that we've had bought throughout town. Our highway department will install them, and Silver Hill will pay us for the, uh, for the materials, the material cost. So it's kind of a win-win.
What's the other one besides Silver Hill?
Both of them, it's two, there are two sidewalks, there's two crossings there.
Oh, two crossings, okay.
Yes, yeah, sorry.
Questions? I move, we approve this request, um, from Public Works to enter into a contract with East Coast Signs in the amount of twenty-two seven seventy-five for the purchase of two rapid. Rectangular flashing beacons, uh, for two locations at Silver Hill Hospital on Valley Road. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, this next one is for our local roads, our paving of our local roads, um, this season, or a portion of them, I should say. We went out to bid, six contractors took the, uh, the package, four came back with, uh, with a bid package. Uh, they ranged in price from one million fifty-seven to, uh, one million seven thirty. Uh, F G B was the low bidder at one million fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-five cents. We had an alternate in for the installation of additional granite curbing along Millport Avenue. Um, as a longevity issue, the, right now, the sidewalk is offset, so there's a. Blacktop curb that's there, we'd like to replace that with, uh, with granite curbing, um, and I think that that will then. One, beautify the area, and two, uh, we won't have to go back and repair that, since it's a one-way, we tend to have a lot of plow damage along that, that stretch. Um, so we'd like, so that's why I had it added as an alternate, if I add that in and add the contingency of a hundred fifty-nine thousand, the total project is one million two forty-seven nine seventy-eight forty-five.
Questions?
Is this similar breakout that we've had, let's say, last year for paving?
Absolutely.
Uh, in terms of the number of, uh, construction groups that applied for this, or?
This is actually more. So last year, I think we had three, this year we had six, so six taken, so we had more this year, um. Burns was a, a new player, we had American paving that, uh, did not bid, um. But, uh, I'm, I'm. Feel certain that they'll bid on our high school project, and then another project that we've got coming forward, uh, and then Star Construction took the contract as well, but last year was just, uh. It was F G B, Deering and Grasso. And Deering, uh, is no longer in business, they closed their, they'll, they closed their doors in December.
But even at the lowest bid, does that reflect an increase in inflation from your, the, the year prior?
That's, that's an excellent question. So, you know, our, our biggest marker is, is on the, uh, is on the pavement side. And on the milling side, and, uh, we actually did quite well. Last year, the milling was two and a quarter per square yard, this year it's two forty. Um, and the, uh, the largest jump was in the vituminous, F G B was the low price for, uh, um, for their vituminous, uh, for Hall and Lake. At a hundred and fourteen dollars and five cents a ton, and last year, I believe, we were at ninety-eight. So that's that, we were, we were waiting for this number to come straight out, actually was contacted by, um. Another town to find out what our numbers are, because he's trying to see, you know, how his numbers will fare.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh.
So this will include Lakeview?
This will include Lakeview Avenue, the, the upper stretch of Lakeview Avenue.
Anybody on Lakeview, you're gonna get paid very soon.
Well, that's from one twenty-three to, to Millport Avenue.
Yes, yeah, it's horrible.
That and Church Street.
Church Street too. Okay, and then a few others, thank you. Any, any other questions? I moved, I moved this, I move, we approve the request from Public Works to enter into a contract with F G B Construction in the amount of one million two forty-seven nine seventy-eight forty-five, um, as described by Tiger. Second?
Second here.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. And this next is for the granite curbing for that project, it's, uh, from William Stone. Uh, the, was at fifty-eight thousand seven sixty-three sixty-five, added a five hundred dollar contingency only because. The granite doesn't come in the exact linear footage that we, that we want, as they cut it, it's usually a, a couple tenths of a foot off, for a total of fifty-nine two sixty-three sixty-four. Um, there's a long lead time on all these items, why I had asked for the pricing earlier, we've got a, we've got a couple of our. Projects in the queue, and then these will come forward, they'll hit, um, they should hit us in July, which is the exact same time when we want it, so when school's out, we can actually then. Go in and start putting this in, especially on Millport, like to be on there during the summer. So, uh, we, uh, we ask approval for the purchase of this material as well.
Uh, I move, we approve this request from, uh, Public Works to enter to contract with William Stone in the amount of fifty-nine thousand two sixty-three sixty-four, which includes a contingency of five hundred dollars. To purchase granite curbing as, uh, for projects, road projects, uh, number one. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Finally, Tree Warden.
The last one is, uh, Tree Ward, um. I went out to bid, uh, for. Eleven separate locations. The lowest bid was from Almstead at twelve thousand two forty, Hutchinson was the high bid at seventeen-five eighty-five, we had three bidders still going out to the, the same list that we've had. Everyone that's on our emergency call list, um. Some of this work is for pruning of the trees over by, uh. Uh, Acme itself, we get some questions about the, uh, the cherry trees along Elm Street, then the, the rest of them are, uh. Mostly removals of, uh, trees throughout town.
I move, we approve this request from, uh, the Tree Warden to enter into a contract with Almstead Tree and Shrub. For twelve thousand two forty foot, uh, removal, pruning and stump removal of various trees in town, as described by Tiger. Second?
Second here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So a quick, a quick, uh, summary of, of the Playhouse?
Sure, the, uh.
Bill, you want to join us?
What?
I'm gonna plug that back inside.
Yeah. Yeah. Just click breakdown that we gave.
So as we mentioned to the, as we mentioned to the Board of Finance, uh, during, um. Our, uh, budget deliberations, uh, week or so ago, um. The project has seen some, uh, some additional cost increases, the majority, the, the first and foremost one, the largest one was. The change in the H V A C itself from the original budgeted number, um, to the, uh, to the current cost, that, uh. The fact that we have to now, um. Replace the entire system with, uh, with the new system and, uh, based upon the requirements of what, what, what our. Leaseholder would like as far as a hundred percent of the building being, uh, used a hundred percent of the time. Um, that cost came up from, uh, from the budgeted number of four hundred thousand to, uh, approximately two point three million. And we had some additional work, um, that was necessary based upon, as we went through the interior demolition. Uh, and broke out the building, we noticed that, uh, during previous, since, uh, previous work of the building, they actually. Um, did some damage to the structure itself, taking out some of the, the bearing items, some of the, some of, of the girders are separating some of the areas that needed to be replaced or, uh. Refashioned, so the structural engineers mentioned things that we've got to do on a structural side to then make the building whole again. Um, and then, given the fact of after the. Eight separate design iterations that we went through to try to fit everything into the building and make it compliant with current standards and, um. Uh, and, uh, make it accessible throughout, um. The, uh, we placed the elevator in the center of the building, we were able to put the bathrooms on the first floor down below, that caused us to have to raise the ceiling height. Uh, on the first floor, to then, um, give us substantial headroom or enough headroom to put the bathrooms there. And then at that point in time, um, we weren't able to use the balcony, um, that was there because it was gonna be inaccessible, we tried to see if we could get a, uh, an elevator with a mid-stop. In it to be able to utilize the balcony, the balcony was, uh, gonna be inaccessible, so therefore unusable. So at that point in time, we, we, we were able to open up the second floor and add an additional twelve hundred square feet of, of area to the, uh, second floor and take up that balcony space. And. Excuse me, um. And then, also, the, uh, the thought was that we wanted to get the, all the H V A C off the back of the building, try to clean up the building itself. Take down the, that accessory structure that's attached to the building for the H V A C and get rid of the, uh. Get rid of the piping and, and the duck work and put everything inside for the fact it'll be better for the project and better for the, the H V A C system longevity-wise. We couldn't put it on the roof because the roof doesn't have enough, um, isn't strong enough to house the entire system. We looked at putting it on the roof, but the, the amount of work that would have to be done to the structure to make the roof, um, suitable to hold it. Wasn't worthwhile, it was better for us to build a third floor in the, in the space between the, the large space between the second and the third floors, build a third floor and put the H V system inside. So governed or given all that. Um, we came up with, uh, an additional amount needed for the project of just over four million dollars, there is a cost share with Cinema Lab of one point nine seven five.
Does Cinema Lab know all, all about this?
We have a meeting with Cinema Lab tomorrow, but we had initial discussions with them previously when the, when the.
Do they know, do they know how big this is? They do.
Uh, how big, uh, it grew, they knew that, and, um. Obviously, they weren't happy with that, but they also want to keep moving forward, so that's why we're gonna meet, go over the whole program with them this week. Getting back in, um. We're back to the same page.
Think we're at risk of losing a joint venture with them? And we.
I mean, that's, I think that's one of.
If we consulted legal counsel and understand. What their options are potentially under the agreement.
We have remis, well, or to cost share once we hit the two point.
This is a material, what I would say is, is a lawyer, a material adverse, adverse event, I think, given the size of it. I mean, doubling the price.
We can talk to them.
Yeah, no, I, I'm.
At this point, they didn't indicate to me that, or anything.
Let me just step back for a second, just so I'm, if I'm reading this correctly, we originally, the budget for the whole thing was, uh, was it three point nine million?
Three point nine.
Okay. And the, the, the project now is now seven point four?
Seven point four with, yeah, with the contingency.
I, I, I think I heard at the, uh, was it at the Board of Finance meeting that with the contingency it was up over eight?
That's correct, I'm sorry. So with the seven four plus the five hundred thousand dollar contingency, we were close to eight.
Okay.
That's correct.
So, so it's like, the project has doubled in size, or we, you know, had we started, you'd also talked about something called the design-build. Feature. Had we not gone with design-build, but we had looked at, you know, the individual, you know, the design and then individual projects, would that have still come out twice what we originally thought?
I was wondering the same thing, this is a victim of, I know, design-build can be controversial, sometimes is this, are we kind of a victim of that? Choosing to go that route.
In speaking to the designer and the contractor, both, the, um, the. All the, all the answers came into play once we started to do the interior demo. Had we just gone to design and then gone out with what we thought we were gonna need. Um, we would have been faced with substantial change orders and change orders on top of change orders as they continue to play through and then have to redesign as we went. So, speaking to both of them. Uh, one, they feel that the cost is less, uh, with the method that we chose, the design-build, and quicker and better, so, um. Overall, their, their feeling is that this was, well, the numbers are nowhere near, um, you know, we're not happy with the numbers, Thea. Or the situation, the fact of the matter is that, had we gone a traditional route, the traditional route would have been worse, we would have been in a worse situation, because actually we would have been. Now just discovering everything and then having to go through the process of it, having a, having a different number to start with.
Worse in times of timing or cost or both?
Both.
Yeah.
We remember both, we're worse for both, the, um. Uh, so the contractor actually said that we would have been.
You know, we have a, we have a brand new building inside a hundred-year-old structure, so it's much more expensive to renovate old hundred-year-old buildings and.
On the, so thought is we hadn't, nothing had been done, or, you know, thi- this is a substantial improvement for a hundred-year-old building, right? We haven't touched it really, except for putting a roof on. Since, since we've owned it. And, uh, it will be a fantastic space when it's done, it's just a question of, you know, the situation we're in at present.
Yeah, so it, back in, I think was, was it February twenty-first, I had the wrong date initially, but, uh, February twenty-first, when we talked about the. What you were buying from, I think it was F and M Electric, did we know at that time, that is, is that a? Are we taking that off the table? We have to do a whole new HVAC system?
Well, we purchased the, um, HVAC equipment, just the original equipment back then, we had not known that the number of change tools. As, uh, as the revised numbers came in, um. So.
So now we have that equipment, and it's still usable under this new?
Yeah, no, it's that part of the program.
Okay.
And the reason why we did that is because the lead time for that equipment. Uh, right now, they're talking end of October, so it's getting, that's why we wanted to purchase that equipment then. Keep it going, um, had we known it would have took a curve at us like this, we probably would have rethought that, but. Um, we're just trying to keep things on a timely fashion moving forward.
Are we confident that Pytag's not gonna go up further?
No, at this point here, they, they expose all the risk.
Right.
Uh, and I'd love to take us to walk through it whenever you'd like to, so you can see where.
Like, I'd like to see that.
Yeah, I mean, whatever you want, I'll do that for you, okay? Um. We, we, we opened up the whole building, and usually, like, we always talk about the risk of any project, and, you know, when you're doing the demo, you're exposing all your risk.
Because everything's wide open, you can see and.
That's kind of like how this came to be, is that by doing design-build, as we did the interior demolition, um, to, uh. To discover things, we, we discovered a lot of things, and it was in nineteen eighty when I think the big renovation, when the twin theater. Um, said they didn't do the building any favor, but they did, so we're, we're. We're struggling with that, and the structural engineer has a lot of time just in going back to fix all the repairs that were hidden. You know, so, I mean, it's.
Yeah, according to the designer, we're working within inches of everything, we're, for compliance purposes, we're working within inches, so. Having the fact that the building is open and measurable, and, uh, we can see everything. Is, uh, is a huge boon to them, so that they know exactly what, what they're looking at, and they can design to exactly what they have.
Look, I think. The three of us share the support for this Playhouse and, and keeping it historic, um, you know, look, making it, continuing to. Keep it a historic building and, and, and the history there, but obviously this is, you know, disappointing and a bit surprising.
It, it became a great challenge.
Yeah.
Like Tiger said, just to meet all the codes, even the engineers and architects, that this is the biggest challenge they ever faced with this. Structure trying to compile all these codes that we have to get to, and especially the ADA codes, it's been very challenging. We, we, we're there, we, we feel confident, and they filed a drawing to give off a review of the code officials and to, uh. To our ADA coordinator, we, we looked at all this stuff to make sure we got it right, um, because we have to get all that right. We, we, we don't want to, uh, spend this kind of money and find out we're, we're not compliant with ADA and some of the other things.
What's the option, once you go with our partner and you work out whatever the, the agreement is, what's the option if they choose not to participate in that? Increase in the, uh.
Well, keep in, they've been, they, they, they've been involved all along in the expansion of their second, second floor, yeah, yeah, they're, they're, they're benefiting from, from the expanded space.
Wanted so many things, and that's why the expenses falling back on them.
Yeah.
One point five, they own all the finishes, and, uh, when Kevin, uh, put the agreement together. Um, we had a lot of discussion about the secondary agreement about the cost share at a certain number. We were trying to figure out where that would come into play, because I think we realized at that point, some of the things that they're asking for. Is a little bit above and beyond, maybe we would have done. Hard to say, you know, not going to do it full plan, but they agreed to take on that, so I think I, the fact that they signed that agreement, they, they. They didn't hear at that risk, just like we did, so, um. And as I said, they made no indications to me that they're trying to want back at us, anything they're, they're. Want to pull forward with it and get it done.
Well, thank you for preparing this report, I, I think it's very helpful, and I'd love to see the same, um, two twenty elm too. We talked about this at the, the previous meeting, so, again, just to kind of break down of where we were, maybe nothing's changed, but it's just helpful.
Good time to do, we're just wrapping up the demolition this week, so we exposed our risk there, and we can go ahead and do some of that too, and apologize if anything. So that too. And I apologize if anything was misleading in the last meeting. Um, I was just taking it for that time we were at that point in time. Now we had my crystal ball working.
We all do. Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Tiger.
Thank you.
Bill, okay, moving on to appointments. Zoning Board of Appeals, appointment of Brittany Singer as an alternate for the, I, I would note Nick Williams had to leave the meeting, so uh, we still have a quorum of Kathleen and me. So this is a for a two-year term ending December one, two thousand twenty four. I move we approve this appointment. Second?
I'll second, I'll just comment that I did have a conversation with Brittany and I think that's great. I think there's still one more alternate space open.
Oh, yeah. There's a couple, yeah, alternates are spare tires. So they're, they're not urgent.
I beg your pardon?
They're not urgent.
Oh, well, okay. But okay. So there's still an opening there for, for ZBA. So for alternate. Okay, great. Thank you.
All favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Legal fees? Move we approve the legal fees on the tablet.
I've reviewed them. Second?
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Contracts?
Just had one quick question. Was the ice rink removal for eight thousand, the ice rink removal for eight thousand?
By them?
Who's that?
Yeah.
It is. Okay. I just want to double check. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Uh, tax overpayments? I move we approve the refunds and the on a tablet, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. That brings us to selectmen comments and a wrap up. So I have no comments.
I think we've run out of time. So no, no comments here too. We'll pick it up in two weeks. So thank you.
Thank you all. See you in two weeks.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.